We're continuing on with the first. Ms. Hurley, if you will begin.
Sure.
Thank you.
For the Urban Services Commission is Resolution Number 09-2018 to approve a disbursement of funds in an amount of $12,431.80 to replace the sewage system control panel at the Village Down River condominium. And we do have Mr. Dallas Baker here, as well as Mr. Mark Abreesh, who is representing Village Down River.
Entertaining motion from the Urban Services Commission to approve Resolution 09-2018.
Introduce, introduce it.
Introduce? To approve.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay.
I apologize.
It's okay. Entertaining motion to approve Resolution 09-2018.
Second.
Second. A discussion. Mr. Baker, how are you?
Good evening, how's everyone?
Good evening.
Dallas Baker, Director of Public Works for the county. So, a couple of months ago, the council approved procedures and policy for dispersment of funds to Village Down River for their wastewater treatment plant. It's my understanding that they are submitting an application for dispersment of approximately $12,000 to replace a control panel for the wastewater treatment plant that was damaged in a recent electric strike. I've looked over the cost estimate they've received. It all makes sense. Control panels are vital for the operation of the wastewater plants. It's essentially the brains of the operation. It controls the pumps, the dosing meters, it controls the alarms, it controls the liquid levels in the tanks. Right now, from what I understand, all this is being done manually, which, if you're not paying really, really close attention to it, can cause trouble. The alarm system in particular is something that you really need operating so that when if you do have an issue, you know you've got an issue before stuff starts spilling out that shouldn't be spilling out. I believe they are petitioning, or they are, they have submitted an application for reimbursement from the insurance company, and they're going to cover part of that cost. And so they're asking, I think, the county to fund the rest of it, I believe, that, or they're gonna, we're gonna pay all $12,000, and then when they get the check back from the insurance company, they're going to give us that money, that $10,000 back. Maybe Mr. Abreesh can...
No, saying we're gonna pay for it, you're just saying we're going to...
Well, we would disperse the funds from their emergency repair to pay for the panel, and then when they get the check in from the insurance company, they would reimburse the county for...
But the county won't be paying for it. It'll be their funding.
Insurance is on the paying a portion of it.
Yes, there's like $2,000 roughly that would, the county would be paying for it out of the emergency fund.
Which would be then replenished later.
Correct.
Okay, so it's a forward funding, really, is what we're looking at.
Yeah, because they put a little bit of money into it every year.
Okay.
Is this about the plea, their reserves?
No, I believe there was roughly $54,000, $55,000 put into that account.
It's now down to about 42. Remember, we paid some out, I think, in the rough, isn't Laura, isn't that the rough number?
It is, yes.
Yes, sir.
My name's Mark Abreesh, I'm the president of the Village Down River.
Okay.
Homeowners.
Okay.
Clarification to what Dallas was saying, I have heard today, I got notice from the insurance company that they were willing to pay $10,188 of that $12,000-plus dollar bill.
Good.
So all we're really asking from the county to, is to give us the balance, so we can pay for the control panel to get it built and shipped here and installed.
Right.
So we're only talking about $2,000.
Yeah, roughly $2,000.
$2,000 and...
$431.80, right?
It's actually $2,243.18.
Okay. All right.
So that's all we're asking, and, and the thing is, we weren't, we were going to use the money to the, if the county gave us the money initially, then we would use the HOA, I mean, the insurance money to pay back the county whatever was left over after paying all the bills back into the SRF.
Okay. Any questions?
So what was that new total, because we have to amend this resolution now?
The new total is $2,000...
It's $2,243.18.
Correct.
$43.18.
Correct.
And, and to clarify, this isn't taxpayer money, this is money that...
This is all money that we...
Yeah, that you put in, but because of the way the situation is, the county is in control.
Correct.
So the taxpayers aren't paying money, it's for you, for us to release your, your money.
That's what I was trying to clarify earlier.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Can I make a motion that we change the figures in this resolution to $2,243.18?
Okay, so, okay, I understand, yeah, there's a motion, a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, is there anything to prevent lightning strikes again? Not the lightning strike, you know what I mean, to prevent the damage.
The, my understanding was that the reason the panel got fried was, is through the telephone line, and by bringing this new...
And the telephone lines for the alarm system.
It was, I'm not real versed on that, but it feeds into the panel, which, where it gets all the data sent out to whatever. So with the new panel going into place, it now will be operating under the ethernet, not through the telephone line. So therefore, that is taken out of the equation. And I was told that this would be better if something like that happened in the future that would not affect it, the lightning would not affect it, unless it was a direct, yeah. And this was not a direct, it was just through the line.
Just went through the line.
Any further discussion on the amendment? And this, amending this to $2,243.18 is okay with both of you, right?
It completes the full quote.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution has been amended. Any further discussion on the resolution as a whole, or as amended? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 09-2018 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes. Excuse me? Entertaining motion to adjourn as the Urban Services Commission so we may reconvene as Wyomah County Council.
Some move, a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We've now reconvened as the Wyomah County Council. First item on the open work session is legislative bill 2018-09, the proposed animal ordinance. Good evening, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening. Just to bring you all up to date, since the last meeting where we discussed this briefly, we've further revised the draft ordinance based on conversations that Ms. Hurley and I have had over the past several weeks with Ms. Edna Walls and others, who had been active in the committee, that proposed the initial draft legislation. And we have also met with Kevin Ustleton, who's here tonight, and I think's been already introduced, as he's now the acting director of the Humane Society, and he's made a lot of good suggestions, one of which I'll get to in a minute here. And we've also had, addressed other comments that have been made to us, in the forms of emails, excuse me, primarily. There is in the briefing book, a marked up copy of the draft ordinance that has in yellow highlight, the changes that we've made, which I would call primarily minor matters. There is one major matter that Mr. Ustleton has just advised me of, and I'll, as I say, I'll get to that. But by and large, those were administrative items, or tight, in some cases, typos, or just general tweaking. I sent you on Friday, I believe it was, a memo, an update memorandum, which discusses what I would call more major items. And I'll get to those, but let me point out one thing that is in the briefing book version that has the yellow highlights on it that we need to change, and I don't think Ms. Hurley knows about this, because Mr. Ustleton just mentioned it to me. I think that we misunderstood a comment he made about trying to move dogs out of the Humane Society shelter and placing them with other owners. And we, we thought that he was talking about all dogs, including dangerous dogs. And therefore, if you would look at, and I can just, you don't need to write this down, because if you look at the, you'll see it, it's in yellow, but it's in section 133 hyphen 11, subpart D4, that happens to be on document page 27, the page number that's down at the bottom of the page. And if you're looking at the briefing book PDF file, it would be page 234. But the language in there, after the word euthanized, where it reads, "Or may offer the animal for adoption by a person or rescue organization for rehabilitation that can provide reasonable assurance that he, she, or it will satisfy those requirements." The requirements referring to what the animal control authority has imposed for dangerous dogs. Apparently, that would not be good for several reasons. First of all, it could expose the county to liability, and/or the Humane Society, I guess, both. And also, and apparently, according to Mr. Ustleton, I'll take his word for it, it's prohibited by the state law on dangerous dogs. So we need to strike that part out, and however, the idea of putting animals up for adoption, that part of it, we will move into a section that doesn't deal with dangerous dogs. So that part of it will stay, and if you'll trust us when we bring the version back to the next meeting, that we've now extended as kind of the deadline date for this, that change will be reflected. So I'll turn to the update that I sent, and kind of go through the items one by one. I think the biggest item for discussion tonight is the suggestion that has been, been made by Mrs. Walls and some others, that tethering should be essentially eliminated in the county. And just to give you some background on it, right now, on our current ordinance, and in the ordinance that was submitted by the committee, there was no change in that. There was not to be any change in whether you could tether dogs, or if so, how long, and at what times of day, et cetera. There are a bunch of other provisions regarding tethering that require special requirements, if you will, leashes or chains that will be sufficient to hold them, they can't break out, collars, and so on and so forth. The conditions that they're tethered in have to be clean, they can't be filthy. I won't get into those, because I don't think that's the issue. The issue is whether it should be in any way limited. And just to give you some information on that, and it's in the, it's in the update that I sent, there, there does appear to be a trend, at least in Maryland, if not nationally, to limit or entirely prohibit tethering. Two Maryland counties just this year have enacted legislation that does that, it's Howard and Anarundel. And I think there's one other county that has already done it, and the name escapes me at the moment. But looking at the two that have just done it, and ordinances passed this year, which I've examined, in Howard County, for example, tethering is only allowed under what I'd call very limited circumstances, and they happen to be while the owner completes a temporary task, whatever that means, how long temporary is, and two, while the owner is supervising the dog, and either intends to allow the dog to eliminate, or is exercising the dog. So that second part is almost like dog on a leash, but I guess it could be where, where you have the leash tied to, to something. So that's close to an absolute prohibition, I would say. Anarundel County has more or less the same provision, except that tethering is entirely eliminated if the temperature is 32 degrees or less, or 90 degrees or higher. Puynans County, they didn't pass this by legislation, but they have an animal control commission that has statutory authority to issue regulations that have the force of law, which, as I noted in here, I think is at least questionable under general legislation power. But in any event, the commission has passed a regulation that allows a dog to be tethered only if the dog is in visual range of the responsible party, who must be located outside with the dog. So as a practical matter, that would totally eliminate tethering when there's nobody at home, that type of a situation, or when somebody is at home, but is not outside with the dog. Now, as I say, there are several jurisdictions that have done this in Maryland, there are a number that have not. So we're certainly not alone in the situation that we have right now. And just for your information, Salisbury has no limit on tethering, no time limit. I've seen some other jurisdictions that have done what I would call partial limits on tethering, and by that I mean either a specified number of hours per day, or particular times of day, for example, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So there, there is a way that you can do partial limitation in time of that kind. I just offered the, the comment that almost any type of a limitation on tethering, other than a total limit, or close to a total limit, would probably be somewhat difficult to enforce, particularly if it was a certain number of hours, say four, six, eight, 10 hours a day, because who's going to be the timer? I guess in some cases, it could be the next door neighbor, it's not impossible, but as a general rule, the animal control officers are not going to be able to time it. And it does seem well established, and Mrs. Walls and others have pointed this out, that tethering for any substantial period, if continued over a prolonged period of time, tends to cause behavioral problems in dogs. It also, I think, leads to a lot of what, the barking problems that you have. A lot of barking dog situations tend to involve dogs that are tethered. So anyway, that's kind of a rundown of where we stand, and where others stand, and some general thoughts on the matter. So that one, if you want to kick it around tonight, or if you want to kick it around later, is, is up to you. But I mean, right now, as I say, in our draft legislation, there's no limit on tethering.
Any comments from council members on this?
I'm fine with a ban on tethering. Like, dog's quality of life is not there if it's outdoors most of its life, so I'm fine with that.
What if there's a circumstance where someone...
Can you speak a little louder?
Sure. What if there's a circumstance where someone wants to, you know, they're, they, they need to clean the house, or something like that, and they just want to have the dog outside while they're cleaning the house, and getting everything in order, and putting things away? And then, once they've done that, then they let the dog back in. Would it, would it be too restrictive if you didn't say, well, you know, a half an hour is, is enough?
I think you would go with, I'd prefer to go with like supervised tethering, rather than a time limit, because that does get into that, difficult to monitor.
Well, I guess then again, what, what would your definition of be supervised? I mean, if the dog's outside, and, and the, the owner is inside, how, where's your proof of supervision, you know?
I think the person has to be with the dog if it's on a tether.
But again, if they're in the house, spring cleaning or something, what would they do with the dog?
Most dog owners...
Put them in another room.
That they can put a dog in temporarily while they're doing chores or anything like that. I don't think there's any need to actually put a dog outside on a tether.
I mean, I understand, I, I fully understand what, what was brought to us at a, at a prior meeting, and all the, you know, the descriptions of how tethering was so bad for, for the animals, and I, I empathize with that 100%. I just was very concerned, and, you know, if there are people that just simply want to let the dog out for a half an hour, and, and that's it, is that really going to create a problem, either with...
Take it for a walk.
It's gonna affect the enforcement part of it.
Well, yeah, I have a few thoughts in the long, this work session, we can say whatever. So when I was a kid, we owned a dog, we let it run, let it run loose, we moved it in the country, so that's what you did. I do think of my grandparents, though, who are, they're in their 90s, their dog just died a few months ago, but when they, you know, they weren't able to, you know, they have, you know, you're near 90, you're not as mobile as you used to be, and they would take the dog for walks when they could. And even though it was in the country, the dog would run away if it wasn't on a leash. So, you know, during the day, they would let it outside, you know, on a, I guess it would technically be a tether from, from reading the law. And, you know, the dog would go outside and lay in the sun, and enjoy itself, and come back in after a half hour, or something like that. But it's, I, I do understand the problems with tethering, and I understand, you know, the issues that are there. I do see there might be a need for some people, again, you know, that they can't, you know, older people who want to allow the dogs to go outside some, but they're generally housebound, or something like that. We do, in the new law, there are numerous restrictions on tethering, you know, no chains, you know, it's unsafe or unsanitary. I guess I'd be interested if you, if you want a ban on tethering, and I understand the reason for it, if, if, I'd like to see maybe an amendment that would talk about maybe, you know, how you would envision that, because I don't know if a total ban would be, if I could word a total ban, but there may be something more than we could do this in the law now, but I would need to see, you know, you know, something besides just a total ban, something that takes into account maybe there's other situations, but if you could have an amendment, you know, for next meeting that would talk about that, I would certainly entertain it. But I do think that, you know, you wouldn't, again, just thinking of my grandparents, wouldn't allow, you know, ban them from, you know, a situation where older people could let a dog out of the house for a little while on a small, you know, restraint, that so the dog wouldn't run away, but still needs to be able to enjoy the outside. You see what I'm saying?
Right.
So, I, I'd like to see what you're, exactly what you're proposing before, you know.
Councilor Hall?
I would say that I agree with Councilman Kilmer, and I know he gets great enjoyment out of that, that it would be interesting, because of elderly people who have a concern. The problem, of course, that you get into also is enforcement. And you get into discretionary enforcement, if this is going to be complete driven, or whether it's going to be strict enforcement, the enforcing officer is going to have to know about it before they're going to be able to enforce it. So, you know, if you had, and, and if you put a time limit on it, of so many hours, then the enforcement officer is going to have to come back and, and do it, which should be a consideration also. But I, but I think there might be other ways to look at this.
I agree, and I think, Mark, you know, the, I don't think officers out there after the elderly, a couple that's putting their dog out for a half hour, they're looking for the one who just dug the track around the house, sits out on a chain all the time, so...
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, but, but how do you...
How do you write, how do you cover the...
Well, yeah, what Mark was saying about the tethering part of it, and then we mentioned the enforcement, if somebody knows the law, they, they can tell the officer whatever they want, the officer's gonna have to say, well, it's seven o'clock, and you got a half hour. They'll come back, and they'll have, we don't have enough officers to run back and forth at the time. Then the, the person could say, well, I brought that dog in, I just did bring it back out. There are so many loopholes around that. That tethering, I've seen so many dogs wrapped around a tree, or a clothesline pole, or even those stakes that you buy and put in the ground, that's supposed to keep you, the dog from wrapping around it, and I've seen dogs get wrapped around, they almost choke themselves to death, because they can't get back around. And they also knock their water bowl over, and nobody's out there watching it, and then they don't have water for the rest of the day. So it's, tethering bothers me, it really does, when people aren't watching them.
Joe?
You know, being from the rural, the rural area of the county, I was sitting here thinking about, it's been a few years ago, about one of my neighbors that had a backyard block of chickens, and he had a, he had a mixed breed dog that he'd gotten from the Humane Society, and he had it on a, we'll call it a run, it looked like a clothesline, it ran for about 200 foot, and the dog was tethered to that, and he had to run, and that was to keep the foxes and the coons away at night, and the chickens were smart enough to stay out of the reach of the dog. And I think about the farmers that, that, you know, that's just one example. And what everybody said up here, Matt, you know, Larry, everybody's right, not everybody takes as good a care of their animals as they should. Dogs getting wrapped around the poles, or the, or the stakes in the ground, knocking the water bowls over, I've had situations, you know, just on Ocean City Road here a couple years ago, where I tried to get some reaction out of the Humane Society about a dog that was left outside tethered to a tree when it was 95 degrees. So a lot of that has to do with tethering as an individual that's doing the tethering. I mean, not everybody is going to treat their animals the same, unfortunately, or as good as they should do. But a lot of people in rural areas tether their dogs, and I guess, I'm, I'm going to ask John this question, when you, I know you have a lot of rental houses, do you allow people to build a, a dog kennel in a rental house?
We pretty much don't allow dogs, period.
You don't allow dogs?
Just because of the, the one bite rule.
Because it, it bothers me if somebody goes to a house that has, rents a house, they have a dog, they get there, they have nowhere to keep it, and landlord won't let them build a, build a pound, or, you know, a dog, a dog cage, or whatever. So we've got a lot of laws on the books now, proposed laws for tethering. I don't like tethering, I don't like to see a dog tied to a tree.
Well, can we...
But I think sometimes there's, I think sometimes there's, there's incidences where out of necessity, it has to be done, you know, so...
Could we look at it from the perspective that if, could we look at it from the perspective that if we leave this in, such as making it, you know, making it so that they're not allowed to, to do tethering, that eliminates all the variables right away? And yet, we still can leave it up to the discretion of the officer as to how they want to impose that law? Don't you think we're...
No.
No?
Unless it's against the law, it's against the law.
It might make criminals out of people.
Just thought I'd ask, whether or not, whether or not that...
A lot of officers have discretion, I don't know how that works, I, I mean...
I think so.
If they see something, it's up to them.
You mean about when you get stopped talking on yourself?
I thought they had to abide by the laws.
That's not always how it happens.
That needs leeway in things that have been done in the past, I, maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but I've heard it said, oh, it's up to my officer's discretion if he thinks that dog is too thin, that we should get the dog, or whatever. So that'd be the stuff. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, I have, I thought they were gonna, we were gonna leave the tethering until later, and just leave it like it was. I was over that assumption.
Well, that would be, that would be a possibility, is just go with what we've got, which is, right now, no limit. And you could always, in the future, impose a limit, it would be a fairly simple amendment, if you can decide on how you want to amend it. I mean, that's, that's why I brought it up tonight, because we don't, we don't want to, Ms. Hurley and I are not going to propose anything, because we don't, our thoughts on it might not be everybody else's thoughts, and no matter what we propose, probably at least half the people are not going to like it. Maybe, maybe everybody's not going to like what we might propose, but...
But it does seem, I mean, there are new limits on tethering in this law. It, it appears to me that there's a lot of limits on there, so maybe, maybe if you want to take a look at that, Matt, and see, you know, maybe, maybe something more needs to be added to that, to address your concerns, because it seems like this, those limits might, it's on page 29, I think, you know, those limits would hopefully limit some of the bad action, but, yeah, it's a tough issue, because if tethering's done wrong, it's, it's very bad, but there might be instances, like Joe said, in more rural areas especially, where it's, you know, the best of a, you know, the situation, so...
You know, I mean, let me, real quickly, I, I just came up with an analogy. It's against the law of speed.
Right.
But it is up to the discretion of the officer as to whether he gives you a ticket or not.
Exactly.
That's kind of what I meant.
Yep.
Joe?
I'm done, I think. I, I don't think that we...
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I do, I do want to say something. You know, Salisbury doesn't have a tethering law, I don't think any other municipalities do, do they?
I've not checked the others, so I don't know.
You know, I, I don't know how it's going to be easily enforced, you know, the county doing something that's...
One side of the street and the other side, Salisbury, I don't know.
I think we, I think we need to look at our tethering limits more so, right now. Okay. And, and, you know, make it more, more animal friendly, I think.
Well, that, yeah, like I said, on page 29, there, there are a bunch of stuff added there, so...
And I can tell you, before I build a fence, I, I used to tether my, my dogs, had a Dalmatian Jack Russell, I got another Dalmatian Jack Russell, and you've got to keep those dogs on a leash, or they'll chase the neighbor's cat or squirrel, and they'll get lost, they'll be on Route 50 somewhere. But I was responsible, I didn't keep them out there long, and I had the appropriate collars on them, so they couldn't back out of it. So it, it all falls back to the responsible ownership of a, a pet.
So as a clarification, tethering in itself is not going to be considered illegal, it's just that if it falls within the 10 categories...
Right, under those guidelines.
Under the item, under the, okay, understood, okay.
Okay, well, on that one, then, we'll move on, and, and when we bring the draft back for the next meeting, we will not change the tethering part.
Any other discussion from council? All right, thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Well, I've got, no, I've got...
I understand, go ahead.
Several others, yeah.
I thought I'd, I wanted to make sure we were good on that.
I'll, I'll just go over the other items that Ms. Walls and, and the other ladies that we met with have brought... we met with have brought up. One pertains to the language that we have about weather conditions, and this is not in the tethering section, this is in another section that talks about shelter, required shelter for animals, and general treatment. And we had proposed language, and have proposed language, that's based pretty closely on a law that was passed in Baltimore County this year, where they went through this with the fine tooth comb after an animal froze to death. And we've used that language pretty much, which doesn't require a specific temperature provision where you have to bring an animal in, in other words, if it gets cold or it gets hot. You have to consider a number of factors, including the animal's size, age, physical condition, or thickness of the animal's hair or fur, in periods of extreme temperature, which would be 32 degrees Fahrenheit or lower, or 90 degrees or above.
What section are you, are you referencing?
Um, that would be, I can give you the section number, I don't have the page right offhand, but it'd be Section 133 dash 23B. And the, the point of, of what I'm getting to.
Required shelter for domestic animals?
Yes.
And it's a number 33 at the bottom of the PDF page itself, 247 in the briefbook. Are you okay?
The, the point, the point I'm making is, and what we decided after some discussion with Ms. Walls and the others, they were suggesting that the word wind chill be added in regard to low temperature situations, and that heat index be added in regard to high temperature situations, that those would have to be considered as well as the temperature. So I see no problem in adding those, I think that's a very reasonable suggestion.
A wind chill of what temperature?
Well, it would just, it would just be something that has to be considered, the wind chill, in other words, when it gets to be 30 degrees, just on what the thermometer reads, the wind chill might actually be lower. And you'd, you'd have to consider that along with the other factors.
Well, I think you'd have to set a wind chill temperature and a heat index temperature, just like you have the ambient temperatures in here.
Well, they would only really apply because essentially, your wind chill would only really be a factor if it's 30 degrees Fahrenheit, and then it, the wind chill would take it down below that.
What if the wind chill, well, wouldn't you just say that the wind chill was 32? If the wind chill's 32, there you are.
Right, so it could be.
Yeah, we could do that.
It could be 45 degrees out.
Right.
With the wind, it feels like 32, so the dog's gonna come in.
Right, yes.
Okay.
You don't need both in there.
Yeah, I would, I would say this, I think most people are probably gonna be, it's going to be easier for them to know the temperature in degrees, rather than the wind chill factor. I mean, you normally have to go somewhere to find that, either listening to the news, going on the internet, or something of that sort, and that's the only thing I would point out on that, that I think I'd just make that a factor, rather than the threshold.
Well, I think Councilman Matt Hawley has a, he's first last name, I think he has a point, that if you're gonna discuss wind chill, if you're gonna reference wind chill, there ought to be a temperature in there.
Well, I mean, what I'm saying is, it would only be a factor if the temperature itself was 32 degrees or lower, that would only mean you wouldn't really particularly consider it above that.
Should we just simply say a wind, a temperature or a wind chill of 32 degrees?
Yeah, if you want to do that, that's fine, we can easily do that, yeah. And on the, and on the other end, we'd say a temperature of 90 degrees, or, or heat index of.
Or a heat index of 90 degrees.
Yeah, 90 degrees or above.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay, we'll, we'll make that change. The other, the other item from Ms. Walls and the other ladies is that they, we have a provision in that same section, 133 dash 33B, it happens to be B3 this time, requires that the owner provide a shelter with a floor appropriate to protect from flooding. They have suggested, and this has come up before for discussion, that there should be a specific floor height above the ground, such as, say, three inches, for that purpose. Now, the way it reads now, there has to be a floor appropriate to protect from flooding, their suggestion is that, that the floor be a mandatory height of some sort, I think three inches is what we talked about, but, so that's.
I think, I think in this instance, Mr. Taylor, it might be good to be more ambiguous, because if you state that it's a, it has to be protected from flooding, then you're covered. But if you say it has to be three inches, and they're in a flood zone that's six inches, that three inches isn't gonna hold water.
That's, that's a point.
Forget the, but, so, I think if you leave it more, more ambiguous, it probably would serve a better purpose.
I mean, if the, if the water's above there, they can't say, well, I have a three inch floor, they say, well, that floor's not adequate.
Well, no other comments, I'll move on, and understand that that's not to be changed.
Okay.
Now, I'm turning to some other items now, entry onto private property, and this is something that has come up in our discussions with.
Section please, Mr. Kevian.
No, no section on this one in the existing ordinance, there is in the proposed addition, where I've proposed two new sections, it is at the top of that, the sheet that says proposed addition to animal control ordinance, would be entry onto private property.
It's where?
They were sent via email.
Yeah.
Oh.
I can make copies if you want, real quick.
Yeah, why don't you make copies, and I'll go on to something else, because there's another statute on there, too. This would be more, I think, of a general discussion at this point, and it has to do with rabies vaccination and licensing practices. And so, I, I don't think you really need to look at the, the language of the ordinance to, to understand what I'm gonna be mentioning here. Right now, we found this out, or at least I did, as I went through the ordinance and reviewed what the county's licensing practices are, and essentially, there, there is no really broad licensing practice. The rabies vaccination and the certificate, in essence, becomes the license, and is deemed to be the license. That is somewhat unique, most counties have a separate licensing requirement, separate from the rabies vaccination, you have to have a rabies vaccination that's valid to get a license, but it's a separate procedure, oftentimes requires a separate fee, seems to range from 10 to maybe 35, $40 in counties throughout the state, I have a list of the different amounts, if you'd like to see it. Our fee is essentially $3, which as I understand it, covers the cost of the tag that the animal control authority provides to the veterinarians who do this. In essence, the licensing official is the veterinarian, because when he or she does the rabies vaccination, gives you your certificate, that's your license. Now, whether that should be changed or not, I'm not here to, to say, I'm not really bringing it up for that point. The next point, however, I do think is somewhat significant. Apparently, when the veterinarian does that, issues the tag, gives the tag to the owner, gives them a, a little certificate that says they've been vaccinated, and describes the animal, the veterinarian keeps a copy of that, and as far as we can determine, it doesn't go anywhere else. My thought is, and we've, we've provided a provision in there where this could be done if desired, would be that there should be a central repository for the licenses, for a couple of reasons. First of all, veterinarians aren't 24/7 operations. Somebody comes in with a stray dog, a dog that's been running at large, has a tag on it, has a number, of course, and that number does incidentally appear on the certificate that is issued by the vet, but there's no way of knowing who the owner is, unless you call the vet, and he or she is open and can provide that information. Apparently, the practice almost everywhere else is that there is some central repository. Often, it's created by the county government itself that issues the license, where you have, where you have.
The Humane Society gets a copy of each rabies certificate, that, that vet who purchases the tag.
Yeah, come on up here, come on, come on.
Kevin, let me add one thing, I, I only say this because we just went through, and somebody got their animal vaccinated, and the vet says, I just put this in my file.
Right.
Now, I'm not gonna mention any names, but maybe they're not following the game plan.
Kevin Russellton, interim executive director.
Thank you.
So, the Humane Society gets a copy of the rabies certificate if the vet purchases their rabies tags from the shelter. So we sell, the Humane Society sells them 20 tags, they, when they've vaccinated 20 animals, they send their certificates into the shelter, and the shelter has copies of that in their shelter software program, so they can return an animal. If somebody gets a rabies certificate in Somerset County, they bring the certificate into the shelter, they issue them a new certificate from the county, as, from the Humane Society, which then acts, and they pay $3, and they get a tag with Waukesha County on it, and that acts as their license. It is unique to, it's the only one, 20 years ago when this came up and we passed this legislation, it was kind of crazy, because essentially, what all the vets are doing is, is vac, is licensing every dog and cat that they give a rabies shot to. So the goal was that that $3 was supposed to come back to the county for, for funding animal control. That's how it was initially set up, and truthfully, I don't really know if, if the Humane Society is sending that money to the county once they sell their certificates, I don't know that.
Yeah, well, in, in any event, I mean, if they do that, and there's at least one repository, that's good. Of course, even there, the Humane Society isn't open 24/7. My, my only suggestion would be that the repository be not only at the Humane Society, but also with the sheriff, because then if they pick up a stray animal, has a tag on it, they can call the owner PDQ, and you all won't have to house it. Part of it is to keep the cost down, and we talked about that.
How difficult is it to keep those type of records? If we were to say, ask the sheriff's department, oh, by the way, we want to make sure that you guys are repository, how difficult is that a process?
Can we export out?
We could, it's, they're all PDFs now, thing with the licensing and the vaccine.
You need a microphone, thanks.
This is Siobhan.
Okay, come up here if you don't mind.
Siobhan White, Shelter Manager, Humane Society. Say, the thing with vaccines and the rabies certificates is that sometimes those vaccines, and then those tags will be valid for three years, that owner information on that certificate may not be up to date, the animal could have been rehomed, tags can be transferred, collars can be moved off of other dogs, so it's not a fail-safe way of reuniting animals.
Well, it's the only system we have right now.
Yeah.
I guess the question is, where, will it be inconvenient to the sheriff's department to have to maintain those records?
They can contact us, it's not an everyday occurrence where we're accessing those to reunite lost pets, microchips are much more effective.
Well, however we do it, do you think it suffices to, to make sure that the Humane Society is the central?
Right.
And, and do you think having the sheriff's department could be overkill?
I mean, will the sheriff even pick up an animal?
They'll, they'll respond.
I don't think they want any.
The sheriff's office does respond to after-hours calls already, so if they got it.
They do or do not?
They do.
They do.
So if they got a call, they, they could, and the animal had a tag on it, they could essentially return it to the, to the owner, otherwise, it comes to the shelter.
Either way, it will be at the shelter, we would then see the tag, and then be able to look up that information.
Well, it should be an easy process for the sheriff's department to have access to your files, right? Wouldn't there be a way to do this? Maybe not.
Networking servers, yeah, it's not, it's possible.
There could be, yeah, there could be some type of a cloud service, which is, you know, at no expense, I would think.
In the old days, we used to print it out and give it to them, so I guess that's.
I, I think as long as we can keep the repository with the Humane Society, and then I think the sheriff's department can make that work.
I mean, just to kind of get down the weeds, I would think an Excel file could be set up with this information, and just periodically transferred via the internet to the sheriff's office.
And that could be too, yeah.
Almost a no-cost.
Or PDF, however you want, however you want to do it, but I, okay, but I mean, for our purposes, Mr. Taylor, I think as long as we keep it with the Humane Society, it'll work.
Okay.
Thanks.
I got a call from a constituent last week, and they were complaining about a barking dog in their neighborhood that's been going on for months, and said the sheriff's department wouldn't respond out there.
After-hours?
Yes.
Yeah, because sometimes they do respond, so.
And maybe the dispatcher that took the call didn't know.
And told him no, but oftentimes, they do respond to calls after-hours for animals at large, or injured, or barking, or something, and then try to get ahold of the, the animal control officer to meet them, to transport the animal back to the shelter.
Because I know in the city, if animal control's off duty, that they'll send a police officer out there.
Ms. Taylor?
Yeah, I, just, let me just interrupt just for a second, I don't think you copied the single sheet.
It's coming around.
Got it, okay, good.
So, are you saying that there needs to be an amendment that would specifically state that the repos, single repository?
No, we've, we've put language in there that it can be directed, if it doesn't need to be directed, then no direction is needed, but it could be if desired.
Aren't there some vets that aren't even following procedure?
Just Dr. Nolte.
Yeah.
And he does walk the certificates.
How do we address that?
You could put in the language that they, that requires them to purchase it.
It is, to my knowledge, in the language, it says that they are required to purchase the tag if they're issuing the rabies vaccination in Waukesha County.
I don't, I don't remember exactly the wording of the language for the.
Yeah, as, as I understand it, and I didn't really, wasn't the one that made the decision on this initially, but as I understand it, his complaint is, or his position is based on the state law, and it was deemed that the state law would control if he wants to operate under the state law, because the state law is specific about rabies. Now, I don't know whether he also issues the certificate or not, I don't know, I just don't have that knowledge, but.
He issues a certificate, but he has a tag with his phone number on it, not Waukesha County's.
It is not a license in Waukesha County.
Excuse me, can you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry.
Hold the mic to you.
It's not a license for Waukesha County, the tag that just began, will clinic issues. He does issue a rabies certificate, but that tag acts as a license, he does not use those.
Well, I think that's important, that the tag should reference a county phone number, because as, as Mr. Taylor suggested before, you know, a phone number where no one's gonna be there at that particular time isn't gonna do anyone any good. Do we need to specifically mention in this legislation that it has to be, there has to be a phone number associated with that?
I, I would suggest that we defer on that between now and the next meeting, because as I say, apparently, this has already been looked at by someone other than me, possibly Ed Baker, I don't know for sure, and it was determined that Dr. Nolte might have a solid possession.
I'm not worried so much about, about him in particular, as I am in making sure that we have a system in place that works, and if there is a vet that's using a personal phone number instead of a, a number for county access, we, we have a failed system.
Right. Well, we could, we could provide that the tag has to have certain phone numbers on it, yes.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Now, whether, whether that then would be preempted by the state law, I don't know, because the state law is very specific on tags and all, and the practice that has grown up here.
Well, let's try to see.
Is a little bit, is a little bit not quite the way it's under the state law.
Well, let's see if we can fine tune it, and for the local authority, let's see if we can put something in there, I mean, not a specific phone number, but reference the phone number to maybe the Humane Society.
Well, essentially, you're then directing him to use the county's tags, and I think that might be what runs afoul of the state law.
I'm not worried about running afoul of the state law, I, I think that we need an ordinance that adds some consistency for the county, and if they wanted to go against that, then we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, but I think that we need to establish some guidelines that show consistency in the county.
Um, yeah, I, I think, though, that the, really, the crux of it is this issue we've just been discussing, and I think that to address that between now and the next meeting, kind of a, in a definitive way, might be a little hard to do, that's all I'm saying. So, we might, we might want to wait and take that up subsequently, to try to make this deadline that we've established for the next meeting.
I'd like to go ahead and put it in, and if we have to amend it out later, we amend it out later. But I think we need to establish consistency locally, and, I mean, if it's gonna take so much time that we can't find out in two weeks where we are with it.
Okay, well, we'll give it a shot, give it a shot.
I mean, that's just me, anybody else?
I agree with you. Did you have a question? We were talking about locating a lost dog earlier, and Mr. Russellton mentioned that a vet will buy 20 at a time. How long does it take before dog number one gets put into the system?
Do you know? It could be a month with certain veterinarians, it could be more, because they typically purchase a box of 100, so they go through 100.
So if we're trying to find the owner of dog number one, it may not.
Well, know who that box was sold to, and they can contact that vet, we may not have those records.
But you wouldn't have it at night, that night?
It probably wouldn't be that night, it might be the next day.
That's why I was wondering, if they buy 20 at a time, and then they.
Tag twenty-two was sold to Johnson McKee, so they can contact Johnson McKee, they can look up who that was issued to.
So, that would help, but it, it will take a day or so.
It would, it would take a day or so. The, the other proposal is, every place else has a license kind of system, so you have to produce a rabies shot, then you have to sell a license, and you're, you're duplicating the tag. So, way back when, we thought we were being very inventive to only have a tag. It makes it easy for the vets. They, they know how to fill out a rabies certificate. It's easy for the Humane Society. They just buy one set of tags, not two sets of tags. It's easy for the pet owners, because they don't have to jingle around with a bunch of tags every year, trying to figure out when their license expires, when their rabies expires, et cetera, et cetera. So, that's why we went with the one system. We thought it was easy for the owner and for everyone else, and it seems to have worked twenty years. A license is a tax on a, on an animal to pay for animal control.
So, who gets that three dollars?
In the old days, it used to be the county. I'm not sure where it's going at this point.
I can tell you, I know when I put their checks in.
So, the, the vet will pay you that three dollars per dog vaccinated?
And cat, and cat, and cat, don't forget.
So, it, it's staying at the Humane Society until we find out where it's going?
I'm guessing.
It's going in as license fees, so they can be easily accounted for.
Only thing I don't know, might be of interest, is there a cost to get the tags?
Yeah, you have to buy them.
What, what do they cost roughly per tag?
I think it's like ten cents a tag.
So, it's not, so the three dollars is mostly profit, you know?
Let's go back to the, let's go back to the legislation.
Well, I would make just one other general comment, because during this period of twenty or so years, I mean, many counties now, you can get your dog or cat license online, just through the internet, and so there are, there are other ways of being convenient for the owners.
So, are you talking about a separate license?
Yeah, that, most counties require a separate license with a separate fee.
I wonder if that's something we should consider.
Yeah, just, just a thought.
But more administrative costly. A lot of people are not.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. Well, where it's done direct with the county, they just put the money and send it to the county. So, anyway, but I'll move on. Again, as I said, in our discussion with Mr. Russellton, the comment was made, and we discussed about entry onto private property by animal control officers, and/or the sheriff and deputy sheriff. And apparently, there's been some reluctance to go onto, onto private property under any circumstances, as, as I understand it, just based on the comments I've heard. We have, based on some statutes in other counties, come up with a, a proposal for entry onto private property, and that is the first item on the proposed addition to animal control ordinance sheet. And it starts off by saying, as permitted by law, they can enter onto private property under any circumstances permitted by law. Now, once such circumstance is where the owner consents to it, and we've provided there that consent to entry by an animal control officer shall be effective only for the specific purpose of which the owner of the property or other person consenting to entry has been informed by the person requesting to enter. So, there has to be some, you have to say why you want to go on the property if you are going to do it by the consent of the owner or other person in charge of that property. That's item one, A1. A2 is in the absence of such consent. It allows the animal control officer or the sheriff and deputy sheriffs, if they have actual knowledge that there's an ongoing violation by abuse or neglect of an animal, improper tethering, or failure to provide adequate care or shelter, or failure to satisfy a requirement issued for a dangerous or potentially dangerous dog, and that such entry shall be limited to causing the violation to be terminated by appropriate action, including removal of animals for impoundment by the animal control authority. However, entry under those circumstances is not hereby required. So, there's no, there's no binding requirement for somebody who, who might see these ongoing violations that I just mentioned to have to go onto the property if they're concerned about doing it. Obviously, if the owner's standing there with a shotgun, you might want to think twice. So, that's that item. And then in B, we've provided that the sheriff or a deputy sheriff, and subject to approval by the county executive, an animal control officer may request the county attorney to seek in a court of competent jurisdiction, a search and seizure warrant to allow entry onto private property, and entry into any building or other enclosure thereon, subject to appropriate legal procedure and limitations for the purpose of enforcement of this article, the animal control article that would be. And, and we've provided, just at the very end, the section does not limit or prescribe any lawful entry. So, we've tried to, we've tried to provide some basis, if you will, for entry under these various situations, and also to be able to go into court and get a warrant. Now, that, that particular part about going into court is right, pretty much right out of the Baltimore County animal control ordinance.
Okay.
So, that's, that's that section. If you, any, just go ahead.
So, they don't have the authority right now to go on private property?
They can go onto private property, but it, this just kind of clears the way, in case somebody was in court and they questioned how they had authority to go onto private property, this just clears that up.
Has that ever happened? I mean, is that, is this?
Not that I know of, but I've only been there a short time.
I'm sure it has.
I had a constituent.
Privacy offenses.
Mount Harmon Church Road, where they had Mrs. David Fitzgerald, who was the officer.
Well, anyway, we would propose, if council, council wants to put that in, to put that in the draft version we bring back next meeting. Okay. The other section there is disposal of dead animals, and this came up at the request of Councilman Joe Holloway, about what you do where you have dead animals on your property. And I think pertains to some extent to a situation he had, but it's not addressed just at that situation, it's general. And what it provides is that the owner or person in possession of property is required to promptly dispose of dead animals if present on the property of the following kinds. One, domestic animals and animals being maintained for the production of food, food products, or fiber, or breeding, that have died or been killed by accident or otherwise. That covers both pets, the domestic animals, and then the farm animal exception that we have in the definition section. So, it would cover basically any animals that are under the control of the, the owner or person in possession of the property. It also includes in number two, other, including wild animals, if killed by poison, hunting, or other means by the owner or other person in possession of the property, or a guest, invitee, or licensee of such owner or other person. In other words, if you allow somebody to come on your property and hunt, and they shoot an animal, then there's got to be some disposition of it. It does not cover wild animals that just happen to die on your property, or a wild animal that might be shot on someone else's property and comes onto your property. So, that's part A. Part B describes appropriate disposition, how you can dispose of them. Number one is cremation. Number two is deposit in the county's landfill. Number three is burial or composting, if done in a manner that will substantially prevent odor emission and attraction of vermin, insects, or scavengers. And in parenthesis, I won't read that parenthesis part, but there are two Maryland Extension Service fact sheets about composting. One pertains to poultry, the other pertains to animals. And it has to be done on any property with the consent of its owner. It can be done on any property, but the owner has to consent. And then number four is kind of a catch-all provision, otherwise as authorized or required by law. And that is put in there for, if there is some state law that requires a specific means of disposal, then that would apply. You could do that, obviously. We don't, don't want to say you can't. And I'd just point out that I know down in North Carolina and South Carolina, right now, there, where they've had massive hog kills and chicken kills, sometimes there are special ways to dispose of large amounts of animals that go into effect. So, that's part of the reason that number four is there, in addition to not wanting to say you can't do something that the state says you have to do.
Does that, does that require, in addition to the, the chart of penalties and fines?
Uh, yes, it does, and we've recommended on that that it be, what was the amount? Laura, I forget right offhand what was the amount that we wanted to do on that.
It's in the memo.
Yeah, it's in the memo.
Hundred-dollar first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Two fifty, thirty-five hundred.
Right.
Were they one yearly?
Yeah. And there's also a provision, in addition to the fine, that failure to, to dispose of dead animals would be subject to the obligation to reimburse the county for doing so. So, there'd be two, essentially, two penalties if the county has to do it.
So, the fine per incident or per animal?
Uh, it'd be per incident, I think.
Okay.
Per animal with a dog.
Well, I mean, if, you know, you have three dead raccoons that your neighbors dropped next to your property line.
Three incidents.
Yeah, I think that, you know, maybe that would just be one fine, but I'll leave that to the judge.
I'd like to address this, if you're done, Bob.
Yeah, I'm done, yeah.
We've had a lot of complaints, and we had a complaint, the wife and I, about a neighbor dumping dead animals, but we've had a lot of complaints in the area, people dumping dead deer along the road, but they don't just put them along the road, they put them in the fields, along the edge of the field, along the edge of the road, and they, they'll kill a tractor tire. I mean, either the antlers or the ribs or whatever. I mean, that's been, that's been pretty bad in the neighborhood. There's a road called Twolly Bridge Road, which you know where that's at behind where the animal shelter is. That seems to be a dumping ground for all kinds of dead animals back there. I mean, hardly anything from horses and goats to, to dump truck loads of chickens get dumped back there at different times. The other thing we had is the horse incident over on the west side of Hebron. Basically, from what I was hearing from the state's attorney's office, there's really not much of a law addressing what happened there. So, that could, you know, this could affect that sometime in, in the future, maybe, to keep that from happening again. So, this covers a pretty broad, broad spectrum. The dead deer along the road, that people, they'll either harshly gut them, or whatever you want to call them, dress them out, and then they end up along the road or in the field. So, that's, it's pretty significant. I think we need to do something to, to clean that up.
I would say that you reminded me of one thing I forgot to mention, subpart C in that section, which does say, a dead animal or carcass thereof may not be deposited or placed in any public street, highway, or right-of-way, or except as permitted in this section on any private property. So, we, we have also addressed that particular aspect, too.
I've got a question.
All right. We want to, we want to try to move this as quickly as we can. We have three more work sessions, gentlemen. Go ahead.
I was going to ask a question. We were talking about the hunting and the deer. How does that affect the natural resources police? Are they supposed to be notified if there's a deer disposed somewhere? Was it hunted illegally, or does it affect them at all?
Not whatsoever, nothing else.
On the, on the hunting issue, and I might ask, I think Matt's the most, he hunts the most of all, has happened hunting in probably twenty years. Usually, you know, from what I recall hunting, you know, you shoot a deer, you take the meat and all that kind of stuff, but you do leave some, you know, you might leave some parts behind. So, how would this affect that? I mean, if you hunt on property, would you have to then bury the deer legs and stuff like that? I mean, how, how would this affect hunting? And I ask you as the hunter.
Yeah. I'm not sure. We process all of our deer, like, inside. We don't leave anything out in the field.
You don't dress it in the field?
We would dress, so you do leave entrails out in the field, you know, in the woods, and then you bring the rest in. I'm not sure. They're actually, the hunting guide, hunting and trapping guide of Maryland might address field dressing an animal, but as far as butchering an animal, you would have to properly dispose of that.
Still.
That's, I think, goes through my list.
Okay.
I'm good.
Good. All right, so we have enough, I think, to bring this back and finalize it?
October sixteenth.
Okay. All right.
I would, yeah, I would make this one other just statement just to everybody, that if anybody has any other ideas on this, please don't hold them until the next meeting, because that's our deadline. I mean, that goes to everyone. And Laura, I guess, could be the central point for contact.
Next item on the agenda is conveying a portion of sixty-foot road. Mr. Baker?
Would it be some upset people with that? Over this?
Give me again.
All right.
So, this is the discussion to give the portion, the county on portion of sixty-foot road between fifty and Old Ocean City over to State Highway to own and maintain. Pittsville has a section out there that's already been given over. There was actually a request that started at town hall meetings when I was over on State Highway side with Donnie, and they had, the town had asked about the state taking over this section to own and maintain, and it made good sense. It was connecting their road through their road, so, yeah, everyone was in favor of it. So, yeah, this is, uh, so that, there's a county section.
Any questions, Mary Lou? We're good.
Okay.
Sharp's Point dredge material placement funding.
Yes. So, that is a, as you know, the county is responsible for locating places for the Army Corps to place dredge material that they hit, take out of the river. In exchange for us providing the site, the federal government pays for all the operations and managing of, of the dredge operations. We have the location at Sharp's Point, which is our location to take dredge material from the upper river. Right now, the Corps is getting ready to start in December dredging the upper portion of the river. They're going to pull out about one hundred and thirty-two thousand cubic yards of material. We have to make room for one hundred and thirty-two thousand cubic yards of material, which is a lot, to put mildly. So, we have to hire a contractor to come in and basically move this, because public work simply doesn't have the manpower or the, the equipment to go in and move this material and still handle our day-to-day functions. So, we bid the project out. We had a half million dollars roughly in the, one of the FY fourteen or fifteen bonds to cover this work, but the bids came in at right around eight hundred thousand, so we need additional funds. The, I believe what's being proposed with, with financing, and I don't want to potentially talk about this better, is to consolidate the lower river bond with the upper river bond into one million-dollar pot that we already have money available for to, to fund this project.
Any questions?
Sounds reasonable.
It's got to be done.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this is, I think this was mentioned before in the discussion, maybe it was a.
Yeah, we had, we had had some discussion about potentially looking at buying additional property behind Sharp's Point, and we are pursuing that to, to expand it out for future iterations.
Okay. Everybody okay with this?
Sounds good.
I think we're good there, Dallas.
Okay. Great.
All right.
Can I make?
Yes, certainly.
So, can we back up real quick to the sixty-foot road one? I just want to mention that does require a public hearing. It has to be advertised three times, so we can have that on November the sixth.
Okay.
The CIP amendment that he's referring to now also requires a public hearing. That one only has to be advertised one time, so we can have that one on October the sixteenth.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Early.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Next item on the agenda is the Conley Mill Property Donation. Mr. Weston Young.
Again, Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration.
Steve Smith, erst attorney for Conley Mill Limited Partnership.
Steve, you need to be here, because there, the last time we left, there were two issues, wasn't there? Open space and, yes, thank you.
There were two issues that we left on the table, open space and mining.
Yes. Yes, thanks. Okay, so, um, last, uh, last meeting, we presented an update for reconsideration of the donation. Uh, I provided a memo in your brief book, um, in an attempt to address some of the concerns and questions brought up during, um, that meeting. I also had a chance to read the, um, informal legal opinion provided late last night by counsel attorney Taylor. If you're okay, I'll go down the list of the memo. So the first item was in regards to, uh, surface mining and questions regarding that. As explained, the county is exempt from surface mining permit. However, we still need to fill out information to let the state know what we're, what we're doing. The site was previously mined, uh, to provide soil to the bypass, so, um, that has been permitted previously, and they were mined in a shape to basically address, um, proposed stormwater ponds for a development back in 2000 that never turned out to, uh, never came to fruition. Um, we've also learned that with the property owner's approval, we can, um, obtain approval from the state to mine the site ahead of time. So we can get that, I'll say, permit approval, even though we're exempt from approval. So we can get state approval to mine it, um, as long as we have property owner's approval, in the event that, you know, we want the permit or the approval prior to accepting the donation. So, so that can be addressed. The second item that I brought up in the memo was in regards to the nearby Paleo Channel. Part of the 235-acre parcel, um, is, um, I guess falls within the Paleo Channel. It's called the Source Water Protection Boundary. And that is the southern tip where the two creeks of the site, which are their property lines, meet. The current pits are over 1,000 feet away from this boundary, and, um, so digging them would not, it would affect other aquifers, but not the Paleo Channel. And, um, with county-owned land use, specifically parks, um, it's not prone to contamination by pollutants. And as was mentioned frequently by the citizens in the public hearing, um, there's a lot of ATV and dirt bikes, and kayaks are cleaner than, than dirt bikes in terms of those, use of those pits. So we would see, uh, presumably less pollutants from, uh, converting those to ponds. On environmental liability and, um, sorry?
Said that the mining wouldn't impact the Paleo Channel, but there would be other aquifers.
Correct. So as you dig down, as you put wells anywhere in the county, you're typically tapping into an aquifer. If you do a shallow well, it's gonna be more groundwater, um, and groundwater tends to be more contaminated. Hence, that's what septic systems discharge into, and then they clean over time. So when you drill a well, you tend to go down deeper to a different aquifer. The Paleo Channel just happens to be really clean, and the city, um, most of their municipal wells tap into that. So we would be, I mean, again, anywhere we dig, uh, anywhere we create a pond, such as the borrow pit at the landfill, that's impacting groundwater, if something were to be spilled in that pond.
So you mentioned kayaks versus the ATVs. How are we gonna stop the ATVs if they can't be stopped now?
Um, one of the reasons is the county isn't policing it. And if it were our property, and Steve can touch on how, um, all the other parks are, are protected. I mean, you, you're not gonna be able to stop somebody from doing illicit activities at night at Pemberton after hours if they go past the fence. But if we're aware of them, we can then enforce them. From my understanding, it wasn't until recently that the city of Salisbury had a vehicle that could go off-road and, and address that, and it sounds like they have an issue with, to get to the site, you have to go on significantly into the county to, to, um, address the issue.
That happens all over the city jurisdiction now.
Oh, no, I, I, I see that, too, the dirt bikes on, uh, on roads, and, um, I'm not sure how they're fully addressing that. But I'll, I'll let Steve comment on how the other parks are, are patrolled and how, how...
We already know how they're patrolled, but how are we gonna stop these ATVs and motorcycles? Can't stop them now, they're on the streets, can't even get them off the streets.
Um, I, you know, maybe we need to bring in the sheriff to talk about his strategy, 'cause I do know they, they do confiscate quite a few, um, along the way, so I, I think...
The landfill, really, I mean, not the landfill, excuse me, this, this particular property, the Conley Mill property.
Sure, sure, um, and we, we could talk to the sheriff about how they would specifically handle that.
Now, can you, can you cut off, you know, there's the dirt road that runs north and south, you know, that, you know, parallel to the railroad tracks. Can you cut off access on the north and south side of that?
We could, we could try.
I mean, I guess they could just go across.
But then again, if it's not, you know, being frequently monitored, like they said with the signs, they'll remove them, they'll move the boundaries if they're in the way. Um, so it would, it would need to be, now, if it's being, you know, actively mined every day, we have a set of eyes going out to the property while it's being mined, um, and that would help.
How do you secure the, the mining, um, landfill now?
Um, we have it posted, we have gates, so we put up fencing in some areas, it's not fully fenced. It's not fully fenced, um, but the access points are fenced. On weekends, DNR, uh, we give, we've given them access to patrol, so that's how, um, from fishing, you know, we, we don't really want people at an active construction site, and that's what, that's what mining operations are. So, um, we haven't gone to the, to the level of, um, cameras yet, but we have had dirt bikes around the borrow pit, and we traced who it was and, and we addressed that. Typically, like, the people who dump illegally, once you nail a few of them, word gets out that, you know, we're, we're enforcing it, so...
And if this is 247 acres, I...
235, yeah.
I would suggest involving DNR in patrolling it as well.
Yeah, no, I, I think we would, I think we would. Plus, if we're mining it, we're gonna have at least a excavator sitting out there that we want to protect. But that, again, that's assuming we're, we're mining it.
Yeah.
Your, your next, I interrupt you, your next item was environmental liability.
Yeah, that, that's one of the bigger issues and concerns, and rightfully so, um, on environmental liability and, and a potential insurance policy. In the memo, and as discussed in the last meeting, we sent the, um, state Maryland Department of the Environment, uh, the specific division is called the Land Restoration Program. We sent them all the studies that we had associated with the site. County funded, we did a Phase One and a limited Phase Two, which included, um, surface water samples in the pits. That's where the alarming, um, I guess, amount of lead specifically, but other heavy metals. We then also submitted, uh, an owner-funded Phase Two, which included, um, 38 soil samples around the site. 15 were in the pits, um, 21 were in undisturbed areas around the 235-acre parcel, and two were by the city of Salisbury shooting range, backstop, 'cause we had concerns, okay, it could be, um, you know, the firing of firearms, but listening to the citizens, it very well could be what's being fired by, uh, folks there. They also did, uh, the owners did two groundwater monitoring wells. One of the wells was on site, uh, previously, and they installed another one and, and tested the groundwater there. The state reviewed all this...
Cut the groundwater. Oh, okay, all right.
No, the wells tested the groundwater. So, um, the state reviewed the documents we, we submitted, and, um, as mentioned, they essentially came back, you know, it wasn't a clean bill of health, but it was, it does not pose a threat to public health. It, we did find trace amounts of, of, um, metals across the site. Initially, they said, um, it could be from old steam engines with the railroad running right next to the property, but then again, we're also talking, um, and I'll, I'll touch on it, probably 15 years of illicit ATV dirt bike use out there. Um, so there, that's, that should be considered. It was suggested that the county consider acquiring an environmental insurance policy to protect the county from a possible cleanup. It's, it's in our view that, given the site has a long history of being farmland, and with at least the last 15 years being that illicit ATV use, combined with the series of tests and studies we performed, that the risk of a cleanup is low, if not very low, and the suggested pollution legal liability insurance would be expensive and overkill. Now, we'd be willing to look into it and talk to professionals, um, to get a better gauge, but, um, yeah, given, given the history of the site and the studies we've done, um, the multiple soil samples around the site, that, there would be a red flag, um, so that was, that was sort of where we were with the legal liability.
Will, will the, will children be able to go out there and play in the sand? And will there be any, um, any, um, health hazards for people who are kayaking in the water?
So with, yeah, drowning, um, yeah, there, there's always... What, what was tested in the soil was 1% or less from what would, would be a, um, concern from the state. So if they play in the sand, again, it's, it's trace amounts that you would probably find anywhere along that railroad. But, yeah, again, the, the state said no public health risk.
Seems to me if the risk of cleanup's low, the environmental insurance should be pretty low, too. The insurance risk should reflect that, um, and I think that's important for some council members to at least look into the insurance.
Sure, sure, and, and we, we'll, uh, you know, we can talk to somebody, I know there was, um, you know, it, it isn't a type of insurance that we could get locally. We would need to talk to somebody who specializes in environmental insurance, and then the question is, do we want to protect against every possible contaminant? 'Cause that's gonna jack the price up, and then how long are we gonna protect for?
I have a question, do, does the county have any other environmental insurance policies on any of its other properties?
Not that I know of. And, and really, any, any potential property we look to buy has that risk, and that's why you do a Phase One and a Phase Two, and if they come back clean, you don't pursue.
Steve, I'll, I'll address this to you, do you, do you know of any properties on the eastern shore that have environmental insurance?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I wanted. Now, was it a yes or no question?
What he was saying is correct. You can't go over to Avery Hall and get an environmental insurance policy.
Right.
Did you go to Avery Hall and find somebody that can send you to the person to get an insurance policy?
The, in fact, in fact, Bob and I have, Bob Taylor and I had a situation a couple of years ago that involved a very serious environmental risk. And this was an industrial site, I'm not gonna say who it was or where it was on the shore. It was a company that was involved heavily into chemicals, pharmaceuticals, and all sorts of stuff. And they'd been manufacturing in different forms of chemicals and pharmaceuticals for 30 or 40 years, and then shut it down. And we were representing the people who wanted to buy the property. Well, they had, the, the manufacturer had done a pretty diligent job of cleaning up after themselves over the years, but nonetheless, given the severity of the risk, we insisted on having environmental insurance. And you get it through, you can get it through lloyds of London, that's basically where it comes. And it is expensive. If my memory serves me correctly, that policy cost $150,000, 10-year policy. But, the comparison of that situation there to here is between night and day. There really is, there really is no risk here, because although the Phase One report suggested that there might be a problem because of the high concentration of lead and a couple of other metals in not, not groundwater, but in the surface water that was just lying in pools on the bottom of these pits. It wasn't, that wasn't water you were gonna bathe in or water you were ever gonna drink. And so, there, there is no parameter for that. But nonetheless, when you see something like that, that's the purpose of a Phase One study, is to identify something. So we did have the Phase Two studies done, both the soils and the water. The soil samples, um, Wes had mentioned how many borings they took all over the place, came back fine. Not a single metal was anywhere near the threshold, uh, of MDE or EPA. Same thing with the water. We had, um, well, the Heinz firm did all this work, and they had Somerset well come in, dig a, bore, I mean, drill, a brand-new, roughly 90 to 100-foot well into an aquifer from which you would, which the state health department said you would draw your drinking water. That, the test results from that came back, back fine, no problem. We also had on the property a, an existing well, shallow well, went down about 25 feet. That well had been put in back in the, in the 1990s at the same, at the time that the proposal was made to excavate the dirt that created these pits to use on the highway. One of the parameters of that was, the contractor and the State Highway Administration were not permitted to excavate down any lower than two feet above the existing groundwater elevation. And on this particular piece of property, the groundwater is around 22 to 24 feet below the surface level. You don't go out to Pittsville and find much like that, I don't think, Joe. I mean, it's, it's an unusual situation. And so that's why that first well was put in, was to make, first of all, establish where our groundwater elevation was, so that we could then limit the contractor to excavating no deeper than two feet above that. And that was the way the contract was drawn, and that's the way it was excavated.
Well, can I end up with you for a second? So you're saying that you excavated, the two pits that are there right now are excavated basically two feet above groundwater level?
Yes.
So we're not gonna be able, so we're not gonna be able to dig out those pits, then?
Oh, sure.
No, we, we can dig them out for, yeah, what, what State Highway was requiring is different than what our Surface One. So there's actually more soil there than I anticipated, I, I assume we're, we're like, a foot above.
All right, well, and, and secondly, so, you said instead of doing the insurance, we could possibly require, um, the owners to indemnify us if there's future? And so, is that, is that something, I mean, it's an LLC right now, but with the individual owners, I mean, I mean, how would that work, then, if that would be the case?
There's no way, I mean, the, the indemnity there is really of no value to the company, uh, to the county, I mean, for this very simple reason, and I think Bob mentioned this, or at least alluded to it in his memo that he gave to you. And that's because it's a limited liability partner. And the individual partners in this thing, and their heirs, are not gonna be willing to indemnify on something that they're giving away. First of all, there's no reason for it, the, the Phase Two studies show that there is no problem.
Well, if that's the case, then the insurance shouldn't be that high.
Well, it, it, it...
If it's not that big a risk, then the insurance shouldn't be high. I'm like Mark, if it's not that big of a problem, the insurance shouldn't be that big of a problem.
And, and I think, I think we should, I think we should pursue the conversation. I think we need to pursue the conversation about insurance, and, um, it, it's just, given the history, we think the risk is very low, and it may be a waste of time. But, but I think we can come forward with, you know, what a policy would cost, what's involved with it. And, and I think it, we can look into it, we just think, given the history of the site and the amount of testing that's been done, it's, yes.
You know, um, several things here. You said it's been used for farmland for a number of years, but it was also an industrial site. It became an industrial site when they started mining the dirt out of it, to a certain extent. I mean, any, any mine is considered industrial. I mean, there wasn't a plant put on, on the property, but it would be considered industrial to a certain extent. So, let me give some history here. The airport a few years ago acquired the property at the end of the runway on Airport Road. Before they acquired that property, they made sure that the FAA was gonna pay for the cleanup of that property. It ended up being a lot more than they thought they were gonna have to pay, because it had radium in the product that was buried on the ground.
Old, old naval base?
No, it was, um, where a fellow bought old airplanes and stored them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Parks guy. Yeah, Parks guy. Cost, cost, we don't know how much it cost, FAA paid for it, I mean, but it was, it turned into be almost like a super fun site before it's over. Our collector road, when we got ready to put our collector road in here, they dug up trash, and Mark Whitlock told us yesterday, over a million dollars just for that little short place that they had to clean that trash up. So, the chance of liability here is great. place that they had to clean that trash up. So, the chance of liability here is great. We don't know what it is. We know what the tests show. And like I told you yesterday, I'd be in agreement with this. If we'll get an insurance policy, if we'll get the MDE permits, and if we've, we've got a letter of clearance for this paleo channel.
Sure.
Because of what we need. Now, the MDE letter states, in one pair, one sentence here, as always, this letter should not be construed as a waiver or limitation of the department's right to take enforcement or any other action with respect, with respect to activities not addressed herein or unknown to the department at this time, including newly discovered contamination or other existing contaminants. So, they, they, they can come back anytime. It's like an oil tank buried in the ground. When somebody cleans it up, they'll, they'll give you a clearance letter. There's a word for it. I can't think what word it is. But that doesn't mean they can't come back 10 years, five years from now. They get a complaint, somebody ends up saying, like folks said at the audit, "Oh, I got cancer because of the landfill," or whatever.
Sure.
So, I think the insurance end of it would be, would be the prudent thing to do here. And I think what you should do is bundle all your information, and go out there and send it to different insurance companies and see what they come back. We don't, I don't think we should have to insure the whole property. I don't know what the rest of the council feels about that. But at least the northern portion of the property where the activity took place.
Sure.
And that would, you know, that would.
But wait, one question though, Joe. Is, the activity is not, did not create any environmental harm? The digging, the actual digging of the dirt out didn't?
Well, something did, because they were digging up parts of buildings, and weatherstripping and stuff. There's, there's, there's been something going on there, Steve. And, and we don't know exactly what it is, because we weren't there when it happened.
Well.
So, so let me just say, even at $150,000, when I get to the cost benefit of mining, I think, I think that type of policy is completely affordable with, with what we're talking about when you compare it to, you know. So, I think, I think, I think when we look into it, we bundle everything we have, we talk to Lloyds of London, or, you know, multiple companies.
Broker.
Shop around, yeah, broker. And we see, what, what would the cost be? And, and I think, I think we can, we can totally look into that.
And if they can't come back and say, you know, with the history that we have, we are not interested in insuring it, which I hope they don't, we'll know then that we've gone the right direction here of not jumping the gun and just taking it without.
Sure.
Or, or they might want some additional.
Correct. Testing.
Testing, that's all the possibility.
And, and with the state letter, they're never going to fully waive their rights, because.
Oh, no, that's boilerplate.
Yes. I mean, there, there was a time where lead paint was, you know, acceptable, and asbestos was acceptable. And as we learn more things, we may learn something else is, is a carcinogen that needs to be addressed.
I think it's responsible things to do for the citizens of the county. And I understand the problems the folks that live nearby are having. And if we acquire that property, I think it's going to take more than just the Sheriff's Department. I think we're going to have to invest in some fencing.
Sure.
At some point in time, especially if you start mining out there, because that's a magnet for kids, you know. I mean, it really is.
Well, when we, when we get to the program open space, if we, if we do transfer from the West Metro Core, there is money that we could use to start improving it. So, if it's okay, I'll, I'll move on to the cost benefit of mining. And this is where covering an environmental insurance policy, if it's, I'm going to say only $150,000, I think the numbers can still justify that. So, one of the things I do in that memo is I explain the need for soil for solid waste purposes. At current estimates, we have, and I mentioned it earlier in the, in the council meeting, 22 years of landfill airspace left at the current disposal rates. We have approximately 13 years of unmined soil. That's assuming we dig both of the Potts properties. So, we're, we're short there. We estimated in the ponds 1.3 million cubic yards of material. If they're two feet above groundwater, there's probably a little bit more than that. But for math purposes, let's assume 1.3 million cubic yards of, of soil. We compared the cost of if we were paying a sand and gravel company to provide that amount of material to if we did it in-house. There's, there's other situations we could look into, as if we, we could pay individual dump truck drivers to haul it for us. We could pay a company like Dallas presented about the Sharps Point dredge site. We could have a private company manage it. But instead of getting into all of that, I just wanted to see if we did it in-house, what it would cost. A few assumptions, as you saw, there were several assumptions, but a few of them included, we would utilize five dump trucks and one long-reach excavator. We do not currently own the standard dump trucks. We have several off-road dump trucks with solid waste. But they can't go on the roads. And right now, where we mine, we're right next to the landfill. We assume 31 trips a day at an 11-mile round trip. That would provide the amount of soil we need to operate in a day, plus some. When we reached out to various sand and gravel companies, the cheapest we could find at today's price was $10 a cubic yard. So, at $1.3 million, that makes the math easy. That has a street value, so to speak, of $13 million. With the various assumptions in the memo, we estimated it would be over, a little over $5 million for solid waste to mine it in-house. That would be at 31 trips a day. We're looking at a little over eight, eight and a third of a year, 8.3 years, to mine that at a cost of just over $5.1 million. So, there, there's a buffer there. I made assumptions about fuel prices and fuel efficiencies of the dump trucks, cost of the dump trucks. So, even at a $200,000 insurance policy, it's still cheaper than buying that soil elsewhere. Again, the numbers will vary from what's assumed, but it does make some financial sense to mine this property if, if we do accept the donation. Yes.
So, and that assumption is just using, is that using the footprint of the two ponds and not expanding the ponds?
Yes. So, if we, if we expanded the footprint, or one of the things that would make sense just for safety purposes, is to take the steeper slopes and dig, sorry, dig out and make it a shallower slope, that one would be easier to cut grass on, and two, no chance of falling. That would provide more material if we expanded the footprints. You know, I assumed we dug, the long stick excavator can reach 35 feet below it, where it's sitting. If, like Steve mentioned earlier, with 20-plus feet to groundwater, you're talking 55, 60 feet that we could dig from virgin ground down. So, there's significantly more soil we could. I based it purely on digging out the ponds and, and going with, which I'll touch on a bit, the, the park benefit.
But if we didn't do as much park, there would be more soil for the landfill?
Correct. Correct. And, and one thing I mentioned as well, it's, it's always going to be cheaper for us to utilize a site closer to the landfill, and use off-road dump trucks if possible, because they can carry two and a half times what a standard dump truck can. You know, we will buy those properties, like we're proposing to do with the Potts properties. But our, really, our only expansion is, I guess what we're saying, to the south, to Levin to Shield. And that's also approaching our designated growth area. So, then it's the toss-up. Do we want to dig up property that could be a subdivision or, or some residential benefit? So, that sort of touched on the cost benefit. The memo has more details than what I've described here. And I'll be glad to answer any questions. And I think if we do, as I mentioned earlier, conversations around the county about solid waste operations, we can dig into, to more of that and look at other alternatives. So, lastly, one of the benefits of having it as a park, which, which I wanted to make sure we came back to, it's, it's proximity next to the Henry Parker Athletic Complex. That provides expansion opportunity as well as complimentary amenities. Ultimately, for a park, just like what we're doing with Pirate's Wharf, we would do a master plan process. We would get citizen input. We would get stakeholder input to see what, what is wanted out there. Do we need more diamond fields, or do we want hiking trails? And, and other, other options, of course. We had conversations and continue to have with the state regarding program open space. And one of the things we looked at, and I mentioned last time, was the West Metro Core property. So, you know, that's a six-to-12-month process. But if we accept the donation, we can look at that, or other properties that have POS money tied to them that we feel we're not using, and we would have a, a good value. I think the West Metro Core probably has the most value to get back on the market and on tax rolls. But we'd be open to other conversations as well. And, yeah, and, and then the citizens comments. I think it's hearing what those folks had to say. It doesn't surprise me, the, the metal found in the pits, in the water samples, when I saw the gentleman's video of all the four-wheelers. It was, it was half a dozen of them. And, you know, they're shooting guns, they're riding ATVs around. So, you're going to get brake dust, you're going to get exhaust fumes and atmospheric deposition from, from that.
And if we approve to take this property, then all that's going to be on our shoulders.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's a problem in the county now. And, and, you know, so, that's, that's something that we would need to talk, you know, with, with the sheriff, and have a strategy for how do we address that, and stomp that out.
Weston?
Yes.
You know, we're talking about two different things here. We're talking about parkland. We're talking about mining. And I remember back when they were doing the Collector Road, you know, they were using trucks and dirt from the landfill to build up the Collector Road. So, what do we do about separating the, the expenditures from these two pieces, from these two activities? You know, because, for one thing, the landfill is a, is a.
Enterprise fund, correct.
And, so, should that property be subdivided at some point in time? You know, whatever goes with the Henry Parker, I guess I'm looking too far ahead now. We ain't even approved it yet.
Yeah. No, I, I know where you're going. I think, I think we would exclude the two ponds, which amount to, I think, 30, 21 and 16, so 37 acres roughly. So.
If you're going to expand it, there're going to be bigger ponds before you're done.
Possibly. So, so we could take 50 acres and, and subdivide that off, and put the program open space restrictions on, on the rest, the mostly forested parcel. And, no, you have, you bring up a good point with the Collector Road, especially that last section going to Levin to Shield. There was actually pockets of clay, which for typical landfill operations, clay doesn't help us. But for new cell construction and capping the landfill, that's where we need clay. So, they, even though solid waste did the excavation for the, the Collector Road, they used that material. It actually benefited them. Now, you've got to be careful, because, you know, you want to make sure that you're not, from an enterprise fund standpoint, you got to be, you got to play it carefully. Like, you, you don't want somebody working for solid waste to be working on a roads project unless there's a direct benefit to solid waste, because they are paid specifically with the enter, enterprise fund money. So, I would think if we kept the two ponds or pits purely solid waste, and then the fencing that goes up to protect the solid waste assets there, the rest could be in Steve's corner. So.
Can I comment on that?
Yeah, please.
As far as program open space goes, if we did consider a conversion from West Metro or some other property there, we can exclude parts of the property, like we said, but we, to qualify for a conversion, you have to meet the acreage, equal or greater acreage, and then equal or greater appraisal value. So, it would depend on how that portion, whatever you cut off, how that appraises, it would have to be greater than what, what you're giving up. So, that's something we'd have to calculate if.
What is your West Metro? That's 100 and.
It's about 100 acres.
100 acres.
Yeah.
100 acres.
Yep. So, that's just something we'd have to calculate if, if we go down that road. The, the third qualification, it's got to be equal or greater recreational value. And that's somewhat subjective, but I think, in talking with the state about this possibility, I think we could easily make that case.
So, let's say we accepted the property and we decided to mine it. What would be the timeframe of that then? Because, you know, there's potential to get the Potts property and mine that. You know, I mean, this might be farther out, where we just have to kind of sit on this property for years and years, deal with, you know, ATV use and all that kind of stuff. Or do we consider mining that first, and the Potts property later? What, what would be the thought there? I mean, because it seems like once you start mining, you start eliminating some of the problems on it.
Correct. So, the only real step we would need to start mining Connolly Mill would be the five dump trucks mentioned. So, we could put those in as a solid waste purchase. We could, I think to do the, we would have to look, could we use a standard excavator at one site? And, yeah, we, we'd have to look at, could we have an excavator and an off-road dump truck work locally at our nearby Potts property sites? And go three dump trucks next year, two dump trucks after that, to hit the five, and transition. You know, we, we would have to look at that. But we could put five dump trucks theoretically in solid waste budget next year, and start pretty much as soon as, as soon as we purchase those.
I think it would ease the, ease the minds of the folks on the west side. If you, if we did acquire the Potts property, that you did start mining it. So, there wouldn't be any questions there about them later on, saying, well, maybe this thing will turn into a landfill.
Sure.
You know, and, and I'm not trying to micromanage, but, you know, an excavator and, and a couple dump trucks, Connolly Mill running back and forth, keep one or two guys busy. You could stockpile it, I suppose. Can you stockpile dirt?
Yeah. So, so what we would use adjacent to the larger Potts property, we, we stockpile some material now. We have some dredge spoils there that we were, we've tried to be experimental with, because if we could use dredge material somehow at the landfill, that would save us money and save us from having to mine these sites across, across the county. But so far, we, we haven't been able to find something that, with, with the dredge material, as soon as it rains, it goes to, to use the technical term, slop. So, we could stockpile it. The other concern really gets into erosion and sediment control. If we're not actively using it, we need to, you know, basically throw some grass seed on it and get, get some stabilization so that it doesn't run off. But, yeah, we, I, I would think what would probably be best, if we could work it out, would be a gradual transition where there's a time where we're running, again, I assumed five dump trucks. Maybe we go three, and we use one excavator here, and then we use another excavator and an off-road, and we're getting it from both. So, we could, we could look into it. Yeah. So, so.
In your current pit where you're excavating right now, you still have some time left in there?
About five years in what we have. But if we got the Potts, that then extends it to, to about 13.
Okay. That seems to be going really fast nowadays.
Yeah. And I'll tell you why. I'll tell you why. We used to pump the borrow pit down, and we dug deeper. That's why parts of it are 50 or 60 feet deep. We are no longer allowed to pump that amount of water down. So, we can only go about 35 feet below groundwater.
When you're done with that, is it an active mining site? Do you envision turning that into a park or rec?
Park, yes.
Fishing, something like that?
Yes. Yeah. That's, that's the thought, is as soon as it's no longer, you know, the active construction site, we can start to stabilize what we need to. Because there's some slopes that go straight down. We, we want to make sure, you know, there's, because there's liability concerns. If you let people loose and you have 60 feet of water right there, there could be drowning. But we'll, we'll work with Steve and his folks, and there's always money available to, to improve parks. So, that, that is the thought.
So, what questions are left on the table?
I, I think we need to pursue the environmental insurance policy and see what, what we're talking, what they need. They may require additional tests, like Mr. Smith mentioned. And I don't know if there were questions regarding the other topics I, I brought up. We could get the surface mining approval from the state, just with their signature.
That's what we need to do. We need to make sure. I mean, if you end up with this thing and you can't do anything with it.
Well, I mean, again, it would still have, it would still have park value, which I don't want us to walk away from. One of the reasons I looked into the mining was, you know, we, it came up, the loss of, loss of tax revenue, property tax revenue by accepting this parcel. And to counterbalance that, and actually seems to overwhelm it, if we use it for solid waste purposes, we would benefit. But I, I think. But I, I think the environmental insurance is the biggest thing we need to look at. I think, like I've said, everything I've been told by the state, we just get a signature from their, their, the owner's authorized entity, and we can, we can be okay to dig.
I'm getting the impression, though, that the mining is the issue. I think the wrecking parks is a long shot. It's just the feeling that I'm getting. I haven't heard anything really, really, what I think substantive about any type of park issues.
You won't be around to see it.
Yeah. I won't be around to see a lot of shit.
Why did I come here to... Yeah, I mean, to your point about the, the park and the plan, I think, I think Weston touched on it earlier. I think it's premature to say exactly what would be there if it's a, a park property. We've just developed an athletic complex with additional ball fields. We're in our first season of it. I think as time goes on, if, if we max that out and sell every weekend and it exceeds capacity and we need to expand, there's opportunity. And to me, what, what this presents is opportunity from a recreation tourism point of view. You could go that direction, or you could, if, if what we've had built is sufficient and it meets the need, both local and tournament and those types of things, you could transition it into a, to a low leisure-type recreation facility, which I hear a lot of what people want is hiking, biking, trails, those types of things. So, I, I think you would need to have a public process. I think you'd need to do a master plan. I don't think we could sit here tonight and say, this is what it would be, but I think the opportunity of 200 acres next to a marquee facility that you already own, to me, from a recreation point of view, and I understand there's other, other values potentially to the county, but to me, that, that's a tremendous opportunity, and, and certainly if you wanted to, so will the council or the executive, to, to look at converting other properties, you know, we'd be open to that, but to me, there is a lot of value here.
You know, the other thing, I was sitting here thinking about, you know, we hear about the Sheriff's Department, the state police, and not having enough officers on the force to, to take care of what's going on now. You know, I guess we'll have to talk with the sheriff, see how he plans on cleaning this issue up, but from what we hear now, they don't have enough officers shift or under shifts, you know, properly as it is.
And, and that's what I want to hear, a plan, because every one of the people that spoke, they talked about the negative, about the people out there shooting, the dirt bikes, motorcycles, four-wheel drive trucks.
I mean, once the message is sent out, it, it can be very clear.
Confiscate a truck or two.
Yeah, yeah. You confiscate a few and, and you're going to, you're going to solve that problem rather quickly.
Can I make one comment on the security portion of this? So, in, in our regular park system, we have park rangers during the peak seasons that will, will travel around and monitor parks, but they only do that till dusk. I mean, we don't have...
And they don't have authority.
They have limited authority. They're, they're not sheriff's...
Limited is a big word.
Very limited, yeah. But, but they're eyes and ears for us so that they can, we can see if there's activity going on and whatnot. So, certainly that would happen at a park like this, but one of the things we've seen and, and one of the reasons I'd advocate for some type of recreation parks element, we've seen it, Shoemaker's a great example, where sometimes public places, people will gather and things happen, and oftentimes are negative things, but when you put positive activity in a place, Shoemaker, for instance, we built the Disc Golf Course years ago. We used to have a lot of issues there, security issues and drug issues and things of that nature. Now, the Disc Golf people are out there every single night. They're dedicated, they pick up trash. It's positive activity, and a lot of that negative activity gets chased away. Now, it doesn't solve your overnight issues, certainly after dark. We're not there all night, so we would obviously need to work with the sheriff's office to address some of that, but...
So, what time does park police get off?
Uh, dusk. So, it depends, yeah. So, it, so, yeah, you're still going to have to address that, and certainly the sheriff would have to be a part of that. But, but my point is, I think positive activity at a park, programs, activities, helps chase away negative activity.
There's another, another thing, too. If the county owns this property, and the county is the one who is enforcing the no trespassing, once you catch a few, it's not hard to catch them. We, I go out there every once in a while myself, and I see these people, and I'll take their tag numbers down, and if I can, if they're where I can talk to them, I say, what are you doing out here? You're not allowed out here. Well, they always have some spiel of it, well, one of the owners gave me permission, or our, the owner's lawyer from New York said it was okay. The last one that gave me that line, I informed him that I was not from New York and that there is not a living soul on this planet that has permission to go out on this property and do what you guys are doing. But they, they tear down the sign, they pay no attention. They do not get in through the 50-foot right-of-way that goes back to this property. There's a Jersey Wall section that blocks them. They go in on the railroad right-of-way or the DPNL right-of-way. They are not going in on the 50-foot road anymore. I mean, it's been that way for several years. But every effort that we have made to try to keep people out of there has been fruitless because, yeah, they, it may lessen for a few days. We've fought, we've actually brought a couple of charges in court against them, but the district court just gave them a slap on the wrist.
And that's what will happen when we...
But I don't think so.
Because that's my point.
I, no, no, I think, Larry, I believe that if the county owns it and there are signs up there saying this is now county property, and the sheriff arrests a few people and takes them to court...
Can they arrest them?
Sure, they can arrest them.
Trespassing.
Trespassing, absolutely.
You're going to go to the same court system that you took them to, and get the same results. Slap on the wrist.
Well, I'm not so sure.
Well, I think just, just the fact that the sheriff will arrest them, again, I think that will soon get in, get word, word will get around.
That's, that's...
And I think it'll be a deterrent.
The word gets around.
I'm going to be turned, turned.
Well, I don't cut any weight, the sheriff does.
I'm going to wrap this up. Getting back to, what is it exactly that you feel is necessary so that we can have a final deal on this, on where we are?
I think we approach Lloyd's of London or, or an environmental insurance broker, and we come back to council with the findings from that, what we think it would cost, what the options are.
Is there anything else that, that we're leaving off the table tonight that we need to clarify?
Mr. Cannon? If it'll, if it'll help, I'll be glad to give Weston or Paul the name of the agent that we used, who was quite, quite helpful.
That would be great.
Yeah, that guy was great.
It was a woman.
Yeah.
Is there anything else that, that any council member would need, need to feel comfortable with?
I just want to, I just want to say thank you to Weston for all the help he's been on this, and he's took a, took a couple of us around yesterday to look at the property and stuff. So, you know, I know we've raised lots of objections, and we're not doing that to be a pain. We're trying to be thorough.
Understood.
So, I've, to be, you know, I've moved, you know, I was adamantly opposed to this, and now I'm, I moved to the skeptical camp, so you're, you're, you're moving me slowly in, in, in the direction, but I appreciate all the work you've done, and, and we are doing this in good faith to try to make sure that the county is protected here, so thank you for all the work you've put into it.
So, if we put this on the agenda for next, for the very next meeting in two weeks...
Yeah, I think that'll be too soon.
A month?
Well, the, the issue we have, to get on your brief book, we need to be basically two weeks. We pretty much need it tomorrow.
So, if we, if we agree to meet in one month, right?
That's election night.
Well, just wait and see what, now, I'm just out about the insurance. I mean, if you get the information together, then we can...
Yeah, if they get it, if they can get it to us faster, we'd like to be on as soon as possible.
I mean, they might read, like you said, Steve, they might require more testing, so that's going to take...
My point is, will it be, should it be a work order, should it be a work order in a month? Should it be a resolution in a month? Because we can still do a work order with a resolution. I mean, you know, technically during discussion of a resolution, we can also, you know, have a work session. If we feel we're close enough, I would schedule it as a resolution as opposed to a work session. That's my question.
And that, I believe, is a question for Weston.
Yeah, it depends, it depends on the insurance. If, if it comes back, it's complicated. I think we'd want to talk about it.
I know that there's not a legal requirement for a public hearing, but is that something that council may want to consider?
As long as it's less than $7 million.
Question's been asked.
Exactly.
Question's been asked whether or not the council thinks it's, the question's been asked whether the council thinks it's necessary to have a work se, I mean, a public hearing on this.
No. Oh, public hearing?
Public hearings.
On, on the purchase of the property?
Well, I think it would benefit the...
On the acquisition of the property.
Benefit the citizens if they don't show up.
Well, we're not really, we're not really purchasing it. I mean, it's a gift.
That's true.
And I think we had, we had quite a bit of input tonight.
Yeah, I know. I don't think we need one.
Excuse me?
I don't think we need a work, or a public hearing.
This has been pretty well, it's been in the media for a year.
So, your target is four weeks, right?
I would say four weeks at the most. We're, we're going to see what we can do, pretty much starting tomorrow morning, I'm guessing.
Could we, could we do it on that special meeting we were talking about, Evan? October 30th?
October 30th.
Yeah.
When is, what, what's the timeframe of the special meeting?
We were looking at possibly October the 30th. I was still waiting on a final decision on that.
Oh, for CIP? Or is it...
No, it would be a special legislative session.
Okay, okay.
I guess you'll have to listen.
Yeah, yeah. Well, as soon as we have a better idea of what it's going to take, how long we think the environmental insurance folks will take to review what we have, we'll, we'll ask